We'd like to call to order the Planning Commission regular meeting for December 19, 2024. I will ask the clerk now to call roll. Here.
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 In there.
Here. We have a quorum. Yay. And it is noted that Mark had given us advance notice that he would be out this month, so it would be obviously approved. And we do have the one opening, as we already mentioned. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Before I move or ask for a motion of that, I do have one addition that we needed to make to tonight's agenda. It would fall underneath new business. Item C would be the election of a vice chair to this Planning Commission.
So. I'll make a motion to add to the agenda, item C, to select a vice chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Seeing none, that would be the agenda change, which moves us to the approval of the minutes. We have the regular minutes from December 2nd, 2024, on pages three through 11 in our packet. Each of you have an opportunity to review those minutes.
Yes.
Any comments or changes necessary? If none, we'll take a motion to approve. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Opposed? Nay.
And well done, Sarah.
Motion carries, yeah, very nicely done. Which now moves us to item four, which is public comments. At this time, we will take public comments on anything related to the agenda that is presented. If you would like to speak, you come up to the microphone, you have three minutes, introduce yourself and give us your address. And if you're online, just please raise your hand and we will then get to you after we cover the ones that are here in the room. Anyone in the room like to speak at this public comment session? Just coming up to the podium, again, just give us your name. What agenda item you're... You just come to the podium, give us your name and address, and then the agenda item that you would like to be addressing.
Okay, good evening. My name is Mo Marcoso and I live on Bridge Street, just down the street off Lake Street. Okay, I'm here to request special consideration for the square footage allowance on my rental property located at 825 Bridge Street. The new guidelines require a minimum of 300 square feet. My cottage is 230 square feet plus an outdoor deck. I would like to point out some details regarding the cottage. Bridge Street Place is part of the historic Bird Center Resort that catered to vacationers for over 100 years. There's only five original cottages left, all with birth names. Bridge Street Place was originally named the Lark. The cottage has all the amenities for a great weekend getaway within a five-minute walk into town, supporting local businesses and restaurants. I purchased the property that contains the cottage and my home in 2001. The previous owner was already renting the cottage through the Chamber of Commerce. I have continued to rent it for the past 24 years, continuing with the upkeep and maintenance along with added improvements. Both my home and the cottage reside in the historical district. I have always followed the guidelines related to this designation. The cottage is rented from May through October, and I have many guests that enjoy hearing about the history of it and return yearly, supporting the local economy. When I purchased property, my intent was to eventually retire in Sagatuck and continue to rest to rent the cottage. The additional monies earned from the rental was included in my retirement planning. If this income is deleted, I may not be able to stay in my home. I appreciate all your assistance with this matter and appreciate the considerations you are giving to my request. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the packet, it was very nicely done. Next in the room, please.
Hi, Paul Woodfield, 450 Spear Street. Here again, just to say, you know, I'm really supportive of the language on the minimum square footage. And to reiterate my support for principal residents with ADUs, they're a really good solution. And I noticed on 306 Mary, we've got a larger ADU than the limits. And that one also, I'm not sure why we have a maximum. You can only have one ADU, and there are lot coverages. So, yeah, anything we can do to make it easier, not tougher on those situations, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Seeing none, do we have any hands online, Sarah? I do not either, so that will close out the public comment section. Which moves us to old business. The first item underneath old business is the bed and breakfast accessory structure in the R4 City Center Transitional Residential District. Review of the draft code ordinance amendment and the continuation of the public hearing. We had the open the public hearing at the December 2nd meeting. That was a special meeting after we had to cancel the November original meeting. And at that time, we postponed the public hearing until the December 19th. The way that this would typically work would be, we'd bring the applicant back up, let us kind of propose some of the addition or some of the recommendations that they would like for us to consider as far as text. However, I'm going to go a little bit broke here and ask for some leniency to ask the commissioners some thoughts that I would at least like to be able to just kind of share with you. Since this was postponed last month, I've had an opportunity to kind of go back and really look at the whole accessory guest unit. And I've kind of wondered if we are considering something like this, should we, as a commission, really be looking at this from a standpoint holistically? Does it fit within the zone? If it fits within the zone, should we really look at it and think about all the ramifications to it? As opposed to just making a change for one particular application? And if we were going to be going back, I think we started looking and kind of considering whether or not this should be something would be added to the 25 goal to review R4 and really look at the entire zone and kind of make decisions of what's permitted currently? What is, what's required of special land use? Is that something that we're comfortable with? If we want to add a new category of accessory guest dwellings as opposed to ADUs? Are we going to define them? Are we going to set some kind of like building structure? Are we going to say they have to match whatever the current ADU laws are? I'm only bringing this up before we would move forward with the public hearing because if it was something that everyone felt the same, that we would like to kind of look at this more holistically and then potentially make recommendations that applies to the whole region versus just one applicant, then we would not, I hate to say we would not bring them up to any further discussion, but I would at least be open to having this discussion before we move forward with the applicant.
Commissioner, I feel like it's, yeah, we're going a little faster. There's a definition of what we're asking for that's not defined. There's some rules for the whole city, more than just this one property that I think there's reason to take some time and get that correct. So that that way, those rules would apply to everybody, as you suggest. So I'm supportive of having that discussion. But at the same time, thinking of what's most convenient for the applicant, do we close the meeting? Or how does that work to not cancel what they've started, but to at least allow us to do the work before the decision is made?
Correct. Other thoughts here?
Well, I mean, I think it is always better to step back and look at anything holistically. My concern, I think, is similar to CJ's in terms of if we do that, we do have this application that has been delayed already. So I'm not sure how we marry the two.
Well, because what the application, and correct me, Luke, if I'm incorrect here, is recommending that we would approve this text language as it's been revised, revised. If we wanted to take a look at it holistically, then I think it would require that we would have to deny
Right.
moving forward with this until the time that we would actually look at it from almost how we've done everything else, like with short-term rental or something, where you really look at all aspects of it. And would of course be willing to, you know, hear during those public meetings, you know, from representatives of the Wickwood and their consultant and would take these in consideration, but I do think that it's probably, my thought anyway, is premature to possibly make changes where we haven't had a chance to think through all the other ramifications of it, but...
We're creating a new definition for one place, how does that affect all the rest of the city?
Rest of the zone.
Yeah. And I think, Chairman Mans, I think that the bringing forth the concept, right, is was the right thing to do, and I applaud Wickwood for doing it. And I think, and I certainly back you in the sense of, we should be looking at this, how this impacts the entire town, not just one particular area of the town or one particular location. So, and I suspect the council will ask the question, have we looked at it holistically across the town before getting into deliberations? So I would, it's my way of saying, I back your approach, I believe it's the right thing to do. Yes, it's going to delay things a little bit for, but I think the outcome will be worth it.
I would just ask, I agree, I would just ask that we move with all due speed.
Yep, correct, because I would have to say that, yes, if we were looking at this and we, when we get down to if we're doing goals tonight or a different time, that we would have to put, you know, reviewing R4, the city transitional, as a high priority that we would start to kind of look at. As opposed to to say, okay, well, we'll get to it sometime next year.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that obviously Chris Corey of McKenna presented the, you know, text amendment the last meeting, and at the last meeting, we did ask him to make some revisions and come back. And whether or not you decide to have them come in front of you again is obviously your call. And I understand wholeheartedly reviewing the whole district, that makes total sense. I'm just stating that we did ask them to.
I just wanted to have this upfront because then when he wants to still come in front of us and present, we'll take into consideration but just so that they kind of know where we are as a commission. We'll recall the applicant.
Good evening, everyone, it's good to be back. I have with me Michael Wector. I got it? Wow, first try, all right, from Sissy Horner, from the architecture team who is working on the renovations that are underway already over at Wickwood. I guess in response to what was just brought up, I'd say, I mean, this is a proposed text amendment, does apply to the entire R4 district. And I understand the desire to look, hey, how does this impact other properties in that district? Or if you wanted to look at, should this be expanded to other districts? We do understand that potential concern, or maybe not concern, or area of inquiry that you might want to look into. But I do want to make sure it is clear, this is not a specific request just for, it is by Wickwood, but such as for Wickwood. Because it could be something that could help increase the hospitality capacity of the entire city with minimal impact on the built environment. They're simply taking existing accessory structures and turning them into guest rooms. Or existing homes and turning them into guest rooms. Just to make a few, to point out a few things in the revised language, which was discussed with myself, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Jerusik, and written up by Mr. Jerusik, does now include a limit of no more than two accessory guest buildings per principal building and a limit of 50% or six, whichever is less, guest rooms in accessory buildings. Understand the current proposal or the current design for Wickwood is 11 rooms in the principal building and five combined. So two, two in the existing accessory structure, three in the house that's currently 120 Mary. So that would be 11 and five, so they would be in compliance with both of those provisions if they were adopted as written. And because of that, Wickwood is in support of this language as written tonight. Finally, I would say if you're going down the line of inquiry of, hey, how does this impact the whole district or other districts? We would be interested in being part of that discussion and just would, I guess I'd say, how can we help? To make sure that that moves in a, you know, productive and expeditious manner.
I appreciate that. And I think, you know, thoughts that I have and I'm open to all the other commissioners here is, you know, the language that you guys have here is very thorough and I appreciate. But then if somebody was to ask me, well, how did you come up with that ratio? It'd be like, well, that's what somebody suggested that we recommend. We didn't really have a discussion on, does this really work for everything in the district? What if every home, so like, and this, you know, the room ratio, we, you know, it sounds like it makes sense. So it may end up, may be where we end up with, but we really haven't had a chance as a commission to kind of look at it and think, does this work? The other thing that came up is that if we start creating a new category of accessory guest dwelling, what happens when I have a homeowner that doesn't want to go through the special land use to do an ADU? And they say, oh, I want to create, I'm going to create an accessory guest unit as opposed to ADU. I mean, these are all definitions that I think we have to kind of take a look at and make certain that we've thought of all the potential items that could come up. You know, I do appreciate it in here, we did make reference that the guest dwelling would have to meet, you know, certain building standards that would relate to the ADU. But at the same time, I'm like, well, the ADUs we've got limits on right now as far as size and numbers. That's so the, to me, the guest dwelling is like a new category, it almost needs to have a new definition. And we need to make certain that we've got standards built around just what qualifies as a guest dwelling as opposed to a guest ADU.
Correct, because we currently have a lot of cases with our non-conforming ADU situation. So getting those definitions, I think, would be important. Obviously, the way it's written here is to fit some particular, but are, what are the pros and cons as we look at other places?
I agree. But I think we would be very open, because the work that's been done here, there has been a lot of thought put into it. Just like if we were working with David and some of the consultants that we hire. You know, when they make the recommendations, we would, we always welcome that because it gives us kind of a starting point to kind of talk about, does this make sense? But it needs to be, in my view, something that we would do as a planning commission to kind of review it for the entire R4 district and then move forward with the application at that time.
And I, I didn't speak earlier, but I agree with you with kind of that approach. But then just also be transparent with where I'm at right now with it is, I'm personally not as concerned with the amount of structures, but what concerns me the most is the lots and the ability to absorb neighboring lots and then consolidate those. And I think that's what really starts to push it to a level of being a motor court or hotel inn. And so it's, as we do start to look at it more, that's something that I want to look at is not necessarily lot divides, but how many times you could do that as opposed to how many structures are on there. So that's just the one thing where I'm at now and why I want to take a little bit of a deeper dive outside of just totally holistic. But that's just what my concerns are.
Does David have any commentary? I saw him shaking his head one time.
Good evening. Yeah, just a couple, just minor follow-ups. I think in terms of the ADU versus accessory guest buildings, my opinion is that the ordinance is pretty clear that accessory guest buildings are only allowable in a situation where you have a principal B and B. So I don't think we'd have any issues with interpretation or, you know, a residential homeowner requesting some sort of accessory guest building. It's only a provision that's allowable under the B and B requirements when there is a principal. And just to address a couple of the changes, we did include the limitations that Chris mentioned. Additionally, special land use standards that would supplement the existing general special land use standard. So it would give you a little bit more discretion in your decision-making in the new section three. And, you know, the only other thought I had as I was listening to your comments and concerns that one thing we could do is, and I'm not sure where you're going with this tonight, it sounds like there might not be a positive action. But one other amendment we could consider is only allow this for building conversions. You could take out the new buildings altogether. So in that case, it would really be no change to, you know, the existing character of the area. If you're just, you know, pulling in buildings that are on the site or in this case, immediately adjacent. So that could be one way to make this maybe a little bit more palatable. But aside from that, I'm happy to answer any questions as you go through this. Certainly, if you want to look at this in a more in-depth block-by-block basis, we can do that. You know, certainly, you're also looking at your goals tonight for the upcoming year. Yeah, I don't think we, I'm just thinking that there are a number of goals that we've talked about the last couple of months. I'm not sure if this particular district is, should be prioritized over all the other items that we've discussed. So I just, I wouldn't want to make a promise that we're going to look at this district for this reason unless this is truly a high priority on your list compared to all the other items that we've discussed over the last year. So again, if you have any questions about the current draft, I'm here and available.
Also, if I could add to that real quick, just in terms of lot combinations, obviously lots can't be combined if any kind of non-conformity is created. You couldn't buy two single-family lots and just combine them because you couldn't have two single-family residents on one lot. So the limitation on the amount of accessory guest houses does also, you know, sort of limit the amount a lot could expand. You understand?
Right. I guess the one thing that, again, it kind of takes me back to looking more like the whole list, like Dave was just saying, like you could make this just for existing buildings. But then I have to ask myself, well, is that fair? There's other bed and breakfasts in that zone. And if I allow one to do it because they had existing buildings, but then the other bed and breakfast can't do it because they didn't have it existing, but they want to build one. And I'm like, well, you can't build it because you didn't, it wasn't there before. I get, we really, I think, have to think about, is it fair to all the existing bed and breakfasts? And since bed and breakfasts are a allowed use in the R4 district, what if somebody wanted to buy one of those homes and turn it into a bed and breakfast? But then part of their decision was they wanted to add an accessory guest. You know, I don't want to be able to kind of say, no, you can't. You know, so it's, I think we really do need to kind of take a step back and make certain that we've looked at it from the standpoint of what's currently there, but what potentially could be there in making decisions about how many, if you are going to allow it, how many are you going to allow? We know that if you have a single-family home, you get one ADU on that property. If you're allowing, you know, a guest dwelling, is it one, is it two, is it three? None of us really know an answer. We know in this situation, two would work because that's what they're requesting. But it's like, I don't want to write the, I don't want to recommend a change based upon what works just for one applicant. That's where I'm, that's where my thoughts are anyway, Dave, and to you, I apologize.
I was just going to add that, so currently, the way it's recommended, they do have design standards for building anew. It's just tied to our current accessory building regulations.
But I was only making reference when Dave said we could just say, only for existing would be another way of kind of handling it.
Hundred percent.
But then that really does make it like you're tailoring. You know, it's one thing if I have a special land use, and sometimes we allow waivers underneath the special land use. But when you're recommending a ordinance change to council, that when somebody says, well, how did you determine that? It's like, well, that works for that one applicant. And if somebody says, how's it work for anybody else in the zone? I don't really have an answer of, it'd be like, well, I need it more time, then the question would be, well, why didn't you take more time?
I guess I just want to make sure too that we're being honest with ourselves and not just delaying this to not make a tough decision. Because if there's a chance you think that you're okay with changing the definition of a bed and breakfast, and I think we should do this. But I just want to make sure that we're not, not giving them an answer just because we don't want to tell them no. And that's my only concern, because I want to be able to ensure that they can pursue any other alternatives. Although I know that you guys have said the variance is not going to be easy to get to. But I also don't want to kick the can down the road. Because I, personally, where I'm at now, and I've tried to think about this one a lot, is, you know, we're going far away from, at least like even how Michigan, the state of Michigan defines a bed and breakfast. We obviously stole their definition for our ordinance, but again, it's always a singular structure. And this sort of concept is going to change bed and breakfasts in the community, I mean, in this zone at least. And there's three of them in existence right now in this zone. So I just want to make sure that we are, before we kind of table study it more, that we're all open to changing the definition.
And I think that when we're reviewing, and this is where sometimes when we're talking about, like David even mentioned, some of the overall goals. And I was discussing this earlier today with both Luke and Ryan, the city manager. A lot of things do start to overlap because if we want to start talking about redefining what a bed and breakfast is, well, yes, we can do it within R4, but that also means if we've got bed and breakfasts as a allowed use in other zones, we'd have to make certain, you know, that wherever you have a bed and breakfast, that's potentially a permitted use, you know, has to be looked at. So it does kind of spill over at times into either other zones that we would need to review. And again, we may end up, you know, after that review, coming very close to kind of what's in the existing texts, you know, recommended texts that you ask us to consider.
We would be willing to run an analysis on the other two bed and breakfasts in the district. Just hypothetically, under this, what would they be allowed to do and how would that compare? And we could bring that back for your review, if that would be helpful.
I think it would be helpful when we, but as we're kind of looking at the entire, you know, R4 zone, because we'd want to look at, kind of like what I'm imagining, David, when we were looking at the waterfront preservation creation of that district, one of the first things that we had David do for us was look at every lot within the Water Street North and Water Street South, the two zones that we were looking to combine. And we did an evaluation of what is the likelihood of that lot potentially opening up or being redeveloped? You know, to kind of assess what your overall risk is and what we were trying to address. And I would look at the R4, and again, not moving forward with any type of an agenda item here, but that we'd kind of want to look at the entire district, not only for the three that are there, but we'd kind of want to assess what is the likelihood that some of the other properties that are within there that could be converted or could be considered for, you know, conversion like to a bed and breakfast? I mean, it's, these are things that I think that we would kind of want to evaluate is, what is the makeup of the existing lots, you know, properties that were within that zone? And is there an opportunity that more of them could be, you know, changed from what they currently are today? Some of them maybe not, because one of the other things that we'd have to look at would be lot coverage. I mean, some of the homes that maybe they're there are already at the maximum lot coverage. So then we know that there's not going to be something else that could be put on, you know, to that property. You know, this one applicant, you know, with Wickwood, you're in a fairly unique position because you have a large enough lot that it still allows you to add. But I, right now, I couldn't tell you how many other properties within R4 have the capability to be able to add on without breaking some of the other, you know, requirements that we have, you know, within it as far as limitations go.
If you're offering to kind of add that in there.
We could, we could provide that, because our team could run those analyses. There is, fortunately, it's not that big of a zoning district.
Correct.
Just a couple of blocks. And because we could, hypothetically, we could run it for each of each property. And for many of them, the answer might be, this property is not allowed in an accessory building.
Correct.
Right? That's it, that's the end of it, right?
And I think it makes it easier was we're kind of looking at it and trying to make decisions on, you know, what is the effect that it has by allowing one accessory unit or two, or, you know, whatever the number is that we may end up with.
I do suppose there are some permutations that might get a little bit tedious on, well, what if this one absorbs that one? Or that one absorbs this one, right? If everyone is allowed to absorb one other to get to two? Well, we could do it, we can run those permutations and I can also, I also understand that is part of your concern. Right? Is that sort of domino effect? And we could probably try to figure out how likely that actually is, given all the other rules in the ordinance and those here.
Right.
Could you also, I mean, I know you don't work for us, but going, going back to with my concern, and I feel like this is others concerned, it's just, could there be language that we could put in there that like, you could only bring in one existing lot into your lot for consolidation? Cause that's, again, that's what I'm really concerned about. Cause if you look at especially from Mary Street down to Lucy Street, these are three home blocks. So my fear is that it's, it's one house on there. Let's take the Juts and Heath. And they buy the house next door and then the house next door, which are both currently short-term rentals. So that, you know, they could be up for grabs soon. And then they absorb both of those lots into their footprint. And then now you have a one block bed and breakfast that's operating as a motor court slash in. So, but I'm not as worried about that if instead of having the two accessory dwelling unit, or maybe in addition to the two accessory guest units, is you have like, you can only do like one lot.
Lot combination.
Yeah, something of that language. I, I, I don't know.
I, I, I hear where you're going. I, I think it's, those are all good conversations. That's why it's, I think it's a novel idea. I think it's a good idea, but there's a lot of, a lot of things that could happen unintended consequences that we haven't been able to review.
If, if we're concerned about, it might be easier to just look at a possible maximum lot size in that district. I don't know of any other district where we have a maximum lot size, but that might be easier than saying.
The way to stop it.
You know, with regards to, you know, just, just keeping records of things. If something gets added and then in 20 years' time, they look at adding another one out, it just might be easier.
The language is probably easier to write that way, too.
Yeah.
If a ma, if the maximum lot size is, and we did have to figure it out, but I don't think it would be that hard to determine what is two thirds of a block or something like that.
Right.
That would be a sufficient size to allow for this combination and others, but not an entire block worth of combinations.
But no, just when we're looking at, you know, the, again, the R four district there, it's not a huge number of properties. So if, if you did limit it, you know, to a lot size or one combination maximum, we could kind of determine, hey, like in that block, there could be a maximum of two, you know, if I'm looking between, you know, Spear and Lucy, because there's only four properties that are on the west side of the street, you know, so it's.
But that's the direction we could bring that back for a future meeting.
I just.
There are also limitations on what can be a bed and breakfast based on other ordinances, you know, based on. They have to have a full-time.
We did, yeah, right.
Just for the people at home. Yeah.
Sorry, Michael Whacter, you got it right. Architecturally, there are limitations on what can be built on a site, obviously. And run a bed and breakfast, you have limitations on what actually can become a, a bed and breakfast. So those in conjunction with the land use would severely limit
new one.
How this is used.
Do, David, do you or would you happen to know the definition of a bed and breakfast? Does it allow for an accessory guest unit?
Not currently, but that was part of the proposal.
That was, actually, the very first piece of the proposal.
What I meant like in, in other cities and that is a bed and breakfast, a standalone building.
Michigan is defined as a structure, but then it says essentially at Cabins and says this does not apply to local or subject to local ordinances. So it gives local control.
That's right. I thought it was local control, but I was just trying to figure out, is there any place that we are aware of that has accessory guest dwellings as part of their definition? Doesn't mean we can't do it. And I like the idea because as we were saying last month when it was first introduced, it is a way to try to add additional accommodations for tourism without having to expand, you know, on your existing buildings since you have the space and the lot to be able to do it. So I, the concept is wonderful. That's why I think we're all in agreement that we'd like to review this and we'll figure out a way to make certain that this, the whole town looks at it and understands that we viewed all possibilities within the district and then made a recommendation to council.
It is permitted in other communities either actively or passively. Like there are some communities that simply sort of let the definition float, then let this happen, right? There, but then there are others that allow it actively. The one that always keeps springing to my mind is, and this may actually be a bad example in your minds, given what your concerns are. But the inn on Ferry in Detroit near Wayne State, I think was six houses. They had the whole block. And that was a very well-regarded, you know, hospitality institution. I think it's closed now, but it was. And that is more than you want, and that's understandable because your scale is so much smaller. If you had, if you had a six-house bed and breakfast, that's a whole district, right? So, so we understand the, the need for that limitation, but there is precedent. And I, I will say that there's high quality hospitality precedent in, in combining older homes together into a single entity.
And I think the, if we were going to be reviewing it, then our motion would be at this time to deny moving forward with what's been presented.
Yes.
We would then review it.
If, if the idea is to work with, yeah, McKenna and continue the review as part of a holistic district review, like you're saying. Yeah, you could also, could also postpone till a later date. I, I, I'm not sure exactly.
Does that preserve their claim? Cause I know if we deny that there's a, there's almost like a limitation period.
But again, we're, we're not denying any kind of application. We're just denying moving forward with the language, suggested language revision, correct?
The denial would be for the, the text amendment as, as provided. Yeah.
And we don't have, there's no, nothing that says that we can't readdress tax at any point.
Yeah, we could then incorporate that text at a later date. My understanding is that, and I'm getting some yeses from the guys. My understanding is that if we deny the application, we could still take the exact text and add it in at a later date.
Correct.
We would lose our status as applicant at that point, which I don't know if that.
Bring presenting.
Yeah, and, and that's a very semantic difference, but I do want to make sure that if Wickwood in, if the intention is keep Wickwood in as a seat at the table, that we have a seat at the table.
Correct. I think the, my, my understanding would be that the planning commission would have some discretion with that and they could still, they, you know, we could still bring Chris to the table to explain and, and go over some of the, the, you know, things we've talked about tonight. But yeah, if they're concerned about a seat at the table as, as just stated, then I think postponing may be a more appropriate option.
Trent? Maybe Trent can answer. If we postpone, are we allowed to postpone or do we have to postpone to a set date? So like, would I have to say, I'm going to postpone this to the March?
Yeah. So your bylaws would require you to postpone to a set date and time. But I, I do sort of understand what's being said about this is different than a typical application where an adverse decision by the planning commission would not allow them to bring it again for a year. Per your bylaws, this is more of a text amendment. The planning commission could, could initiate this on its own and, and then make the decision that way. As far as a seat at the table, I think that this board could recognize, you know, any speaker wanted to comment on certain things. And they would certainly be able to comment during the public hearing portion or the public comment portions as well. And so I, I, I think I agree that it is somewhat of a semantic difference as to whether or not you have a seat at the table. But I don't think a denial would, would prohibit them from, from being at the table when the planning commission decides to bring this up again and to bring it, you know. Like I said, you could initiate this on your own. You don't necessarily need an applicant to make the text amendment.
Right.
So the only other option would be to postpone every meeting until the next meeting.
Right. And that's what my next question was going to be. If you postponed to January and then in January you bring it up and all we do is say, we're going to postpone it to February because we're just now starting to discuss. Or again, do you just deny and then we'll just bring it up on our own and then we can bring Chris back as a guest speaker during those?
I think the denial with the sort of understanding that we would continue to work on it would probably be most appropriate is what I'm hearing.
I agree.
I think it works better than trying to do post. And to me, it's going to be on the agenda for the next, you know, that item would be on the agenda every meeting with knowing that we're going to say postpone it because another item on the agenda is going to be our four review. And I don't think it's going to take us months, but to David's point, I do have to, you know, one of the concerns I had with this was we had other things that we were going to be discussing as far as 2025 agenda priorities. And now it's like, because of this, we're going to potentially be bumping that up to be one of our top, you know, priorities. And again, it's, I, I'm okay with that. It's, but I think it's, he was just kind of pointing out that we had other things that he is probably thinking we're going to start with in 2025. No. But I would, you know, open everybody else's, but I think the motion, you know, to deny instead of postpone would be what I'd be most in favor of.
I think deny and also a commitment that we move with all due speed.
Yes. Because I, because again, I think we all like this idea.
Would you be willing in the motion to set the date for your next discussion? Whether that's January or whatever it is. If only because we have a project that we've been assigned now and we would like to have a due date for it, but also because we'd like to have the confidence that it will be brought back up. And that's sort of the concern I think we'd have on the denial is you would have no obligation to take it back up. And if we have at least a commitment in the motion that it's going to be on the February agenda or whenever you think is appropriate, that would be, it would give us peace of mind.
Yeah, I guess I'm not opposed to that. I think this is where, when I was going through the agenda this week, I was raising a lot of different questions. Because we have goal setting for 2025 as the second item or any new business. And during that is where we would kind of discuss all the things that we have as goals. And then we would set the priorities at that point, you know, during that time period. So, but I'm not opposed to, I think if we get a consensus that we all think this is a good idea of, you know, making it in the motion that we will give it a priority, you know, in our 2025. And if you think that you have the ability, you know, working with, you know, David to help build that analysis of all the properties within the R four zone, that we would be able to kind of look at as to what the potential is for, you know, what currently is there that somebody, could it be converted, you know, to a bed and breakfast? Would they have the ability to add units? My guess is when I'm looking at the zoning map, the majority of them probably are up against what I would think is kind of the maximum for their lots. So I don't think there's going to be a whole lot of them that when you do the analysis, but I haven't had time to do the full analysis. But I'm guessing that if we were looking at it, there's going to be very few of them that actually have the capability of, if they wanted to, to be able to add. So it really, it may come down to us just kind of looking at the two or three that are in existence. Or a possible combination, right? But even on a few of them, it looks like they're so close to some of the limits that I can tell that if you combine them, I don't know if they would, if they gain enough to where they'd still be able to add even one on a combined lot, let alone two.
What I'd like to suggest, Chairman's is I just concerned about the speed of the wheels of government. And they've been here now, this is at least the second time. And they have a business
I know.
To run.
Trust me.
And to get on with. So fundamentally, however we do this, I would like to do it in such a way that we respect that. And we're able to make a decision, not only for the Wickwood, but also for the good of the city.
Exactly.
But I want, I mean, my personal preference is that I'm just frustrated with the timing. And if it ends up being fitting within our goal setting, that's terrific, but I just don't want.
Exactly. And that's why I don't have an issue and right now kind of, you know, discussing this and saying, you know, if we brought it back in, we had that analysis in January and we're able to look at the R four district to be able to potentially say that we would have a recommendation that we could have a public hearing on in February.
That's fine.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, put it on the January agenda and
Right.
Let's go. We'll commit to that and then what the target of trying to get it.
Right.
Whatever we agree is.
As if, if we, if we get it agreed upon, even if the language is not a hundred percent, we've done it before where they, it's very clear what type of revisions or additions we would want. We can still set the public hearing for the February meeting. And then after the public hearing, we could have a recommendation going to council. So it's really delays us by just like one month.
I was, I was working in my mind, what is, what is the duration of this assessment? And I'm, I'm good with thinking it's that month. I was like, man, it's going to be a stretch, but with everything, but I think it can be done in one month.
Right. And I think it's, it's unique because it's
It's a novel idea.
Very, very small zone. But I would, I think even council and the citizens would be happy if we took a step back and at least made certain that we looked at all, all the properties in there. And it's, you know, and try to cover as much of the what ifs, you know, we currently have in front of council a revision to the waterfront, you know, that we kind of went back and now somebody's pointed out that here's the what-if scenario. Didn't like it. So you're making a revision. Nothing wrong with that, but if we can get it right the first time, I'd rather. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, just one thought. Uh, we, we have had a public hearing on this item. So if, I almost think if you provided the applicant with, with maybe just one extra month to keep this application open, the burden would be on them to keep this process moving and to provide the information that you need to make an informed decision. So if, if Chris could get the analysis done in, in for January or for February, it would, you, it wouldn't put us in a position where we're committing, you know, our, our 2025 priorities on, on an issue that we're quite not, you guys, if from my here, you're not quite sure if you even want this in the community yet. So, I mean, I, other things that we've discussed, you, you're pretty set on, you, you know that we're going to make certain changes in certain districts, but we haven't had a full consensus on if there's even, you know, some support for this yet. So, I mean, I feel like if we just gave them another month or two, just to, to provide the information, they're the ones that keep it on track. They're the ones that keep this on the forefront. Whereas, you know, I don't know if as, as a planning commission, you want to quite make that commitments if you, if you, if you recommend denial to council.
Thank you, David. That's actually a very good point. And so if, to be clear, if we were postponing it, since we've already had the public hearing, we'd be postponing the public hearing so that at the end of, like, let's say it's January or February's meeting, we had a consensus as to the language we wanted to recommend. We don't need to have another public hearing on that language. We can just move it right to council.
It's open right now.
Open right now. Thank you. Cause that's actually.
It keeps him.
That's why we keep you around.
I like that solution better. Yeah.
That keeps you the seat at the table, situation squared away. Yep.
So we just postpone till January 16th for this meeting. And then we may have one more postpone.
We need a motion to do that or?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Chairman Mans, I make it up motion to propose said discussion around bed and breakfast. Accessory guest buildings until our January meeting.
So moves second rather.
And this will be a roll call.
Yes.
Sorry, it's on my agenda here.
Yes.
Got it? Yes. Mans?
Yes.
And Miranam?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll be back in January.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much for thinking I was going to release short.
No.
And, and Chris, as a, as an IU alum, good luck to your Notre Dame, probably in Irish tomorrow night. It could be a good one. Yeah.
I'll be there. It has been an outstanding season.
It's a battle for Indiana.
All right. Well, thank you guys. And we'll, we'll look forward to continue to work on this. What's that? I know. That's what I said. It's like, you gotta love the IU. You better believe it.
I'm actually heading to South Bend tomorrow.
Are you going to South Bend? Good for you.
I looked at tickets when I was first announced. It was like $2,000.
All right. That moves us on to item B on its own business. And this begins on page 22 in your packet. It's accessory dwelling unit standards, discussion on the requirements of special land use approval to allow for a rental of an accessory dwelling unit. I will ask Luke to kind of give us just a little bit more of the background. This has been a discussion we've had in the past. And then David has done the memo on page 22, and he may have some additional information he wants to share with. I will ask Luke to kind of give us just a little bit more of a background. This has been a discussion we've had in the past. And then David has done the memo on page 22, and he may have some additional information he wants to share with us before we start deliberating.
Sure. And thank you for everyone's patience tonight. I know we're a little later than we thought. Thank you for Austin for braving the roads. And that, that was probably a horrible drive in. So thanks for making it. At the last meeting, obviously we discussed some of the challenges, uh, facing existing accessory dwelling units with regards to gaining a license. Um, these challenges are largely due to the special land use approval being tied to modern day standards to build an accessory dwelling unit. Uh, and after multiple applications for existing accessory dwelling units did not meet the standards to gain a license, uh, changes to the regulations have been proposed. The planning commission recommended some changes to the proposed language. And the ADU rental ordinance was revised to reflect the direction that you guys wanted to go in. The changes are as follows. There is no set ADU square footage minimum as long as building code is met. And an existing accessory dwelling unit that does not conform to present day requirements can qualify to be a rental. So the recommendation tonight is, uh, that a public hearing be set for the January planning commission meeting. I also want to point out that in the audience tonight, there is the owners of three different existing accessory dwelling units that for completely different reasons do not meet the standards to gain this license. Although the structures are accessory dwelling units, they have occupancy, they were built legally. You can long-term rent them and you can live in them. They don't meet the standards because the standards are tied to building a new accessory dwelling unit. I also will point out that, uh, tying special land use to, um, new build regulations would be extremely problematic in a town with so much non-conformity because obviously the town was built so long ago that, uh, a, a lot of our buildings don't conform to new build standards. So if somebody in our downtown district needed a special land use to uh, have a restaurant, for example, and that was tied to the building has to meet our current standards, for the most part, they don't. So it, it is problematic. And, uh, as well as these, the, the, the audience, there is another, um, applicant that is not here tonight with the exact same situation. Uh, whether it be slightly too big or slightly too small, or it has its own utilities. There is also, uh, an applicant whose accessory dwelling unit is on the first floor and is slightly in front of their house. And because it's between their front door and the road, it does not qualify. Uh, so, so these, uh, yeah, these are the challenges that I am running into.
For sure. It's not, not just these three. There's.
There's, there's more coming.
Absolutely.
And I think it's, and then Luke, in each of those situations, there are existing structures that were
Completely existing.
approved. And it's just a matter now that if they want to be able to rent them, they need to have a special land use. And that's why we're running into this. So by these changes that are put in here, um, the revised language for the meeting of the state of Michigan building code, knowing that I think that if we looked at it, it's like about 150 square feet would be like a minimum. When you looked at what living room, bedroom and bathroom on their, on their code. But, you know, kind of eliminates that before being too small. And then the portion in here of taking out, my understanding was when we strike underneath the J, we were striking to confirm with the regulation in 154 dot zero zero. There was that 022W. That's where it talked about it had to meet as if we were doing a new, a new build. So by striking that, it allows it to be approved from being, if it's an existing and it was built legally.
Correct. Uh, that, uh, 154022 is the requirements for building a new accessory dwelling unit.
So by striking that, then it allows
By striking.
To say that an existing one could still be approved, even if it is smaller. Or has like the two lines or whatever.
Legally non-compliant.
Very good way. I, I guess I just want to understand when you say legally not compliant. Not compliant with the current.
With, with to build a new.
Your ability, but if it's existing, it's.
It was totally compliant.
Right.
Yeah, we're creating a presumption that if it's there, it was there legally when it was built.
Correct. And therefore we can move forward. Cause it's, and that goes back to that whole question of should they have to go through a whole special land use just to get, you know, the approvals, but that's how it's currently in the ordinance. So, you know, unless like I was telling Ryan, we want to go back and start rewriting every, you know, every ordinance. But this is, I think, to me, this is a good way to kind of incorporate what's already existing, but keeping the rules for what it would be if somebody was adding a new one.
I would also point out that a lot of these have already been rentals. So the application that we saw at last month's meeting, uh, they had been renting for years. I think Wilma spoke earlier. I believe she's been renting for about 20 years. And now it doesn't conform to our new standards and, and so we're running into issues.
Yep. Yeah. So I personally like the revision. Um, I don't really have any more questions on it. Austin, what are your thoughts on it?
I think, I think it's good. I'd like to continue to look at them further going forward with some of the other requirements we have on them. Like, I mean, just in the future is part of planning because I'd like to make it as least restrictive as we can with.
If we want. Bobby, what's your thought on?
I'm, I'm in agreement. I, and again, um, especially around the minimums and the maximums.
Yep. If it's already existing.
Yes. If it's already existing.
Building a new, I think we do have some good rules in place.
Absolutely. Yes.
So I think the motion that would be that we would accept this text and ask for it to be a public hearing.
Yeah, we just set a public hearing for.
Using the text that's in front of us.
Absolutely.
Need a motion for that?
Right.
Yeah. So make a motion to, uh, set a public hearing for January based upon the text amendment that's in the package.
Second. That would be a roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And Mary.
Yes.
All right. So the public hearing for the accessory dwelling unit standards will be set for the January 16th planning commission meeting. Which moves us on to new business. The first item underneath new business is the 306 Mary Street, a public hearing for a special hand use request for a rental of an accessory dwelling unit. Since this has already been a public hearing announcement, I want to go ahead and open the, uh, public hearing on this. Knowing that we will probably conclude with postponing it, but we want to get it open. So with that, we will open the public hearing and at this time I will ask for a summary of this proposal from our zoning and planning.
Absolutely. I'll just be very quick. 306 Mary is an accessory dwelling unit, special land use application that, uh, obviously based on what I just went through, does not meet our standards. Uh, and so the applicants are here tonight and they were very patient again tonight. And, uh, they are happy to answer any questions, but the, the recommendation, um, is that it cannot be approved without the zoning text amendment. And so I think the most appropriate action would be to postpone. Until we, um, just very much like Paul, who's also in the audience postpone until we can, um, amend the text and then bring them back before us, although they are here, uh, if you do have any questions about their structure.
Absolutely. I will ask the applicant if you would like to come up and say anything more about the. You're good. Only because then that way when we can just move forward in a future meeting.
And obviously if we postpone and have them come back and you do have some questions about it, obviously.
Always have them come on.
Yeah, we can ask at that time too.
And then so that we can go through the public hearing, I still need to go through the, uh, public comments. So at this point, we will open up for public comments regarding this applicant. If you were in the room, you'd come up to the microphone. If you are want to speak, keep it to three minutes, give us your name and.
Speaking three minutes, three seconds.
Perfect.
Uh, Phil Huffman, 306 Mary Street. I'm just going to appreciate anything that you guys can do to help us out with regard to this. Um, it's a slam dunk as far as I'm concerned, um, but I appreciate you guys spending the time and making sure that the I's are dotted and the T's are crossed. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Anyone online? See no hands. We will close the public comment of the public hearing. We had the one supporting. We didn't have any opposing, no general comments, which moves us down to closing that portion and commissioner deliberation. I think probably all for me. Just see the postponement as the way to go here.
Yeah. My only question is, I know that, that their unit has a separate uh, natural gas and electric service. So I just want to make sure that that's not going to be like a hiccup or snap.
So, so that requirement is in 154022, which is the, the new build standards, the, uh, an accessory dwelling unit can't have its own utilities.
Okay.
So by striking the must conform to 155, that includes that as well. Yeah.
Legally non-compliant.
Yeah.
So for the commission action, I do we have a motion to postpone?
And Mr. Chair, if I could just jump in here quickly, I know we've been talking about this a lot recently, but the, just to reiterate, the bylaws, uh, do require the motion to set the date, time and place for reconvening the hearing. So I think we should just make sure that that's in the motion. And then the minutes should set the reason, um, for the hearing being postponed, which I think is just considering, you know, amendments to the zoning ordinance that are on point. Um, just to make sure those are reflected in the motion in the minutes. Just wanted to make that note.
So the, in the motion, we don't have to have the reason, or do we put the reason in the motion also?
The, it wouldn't hurt, but I think as long as the minutes reflect the, um, the reason. Um, and then there's an affirmative vote of the majority of the members, um, that would satisfy the bylaws. And then we just need to make sure that we set, uh, the date, time and place for reconvening. So, so both of those, you can put it all in the same motion, uh, as well. Make sure it's all in the minutes.
So it's very tough to determine, I think is where CJ is going to go with that. Cause obviously if we bring the text back in January, let's assume it's absolutely perfect, which is a terrible thing to assume where that we may need more discussion. But if, if that got approved, it would still need to go to city council. And so best case scenario is realistically the February meeting, I think.
Yep. I agree. And I would just ask that the minutes reflect that we have before us a revi- a proposed revision to the accessory dwelling unit requirements that we would want to push, have the public hearing on first, and then depending upon the results of that public hearing and the commission's deliberation at that time, we would then potentially recommend something to council if council was to approve it, that would then change what we would have to do or what our decision may be on this. So therefore it's best for us to postpone. And so that would all be in the minutes.
Like make motion postpone until the regular February meeting of this, uh, request based upon the explanation just provided by the commissioner.
Second. And this will be a roll call vote. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
And just for the record, the February meeting would be set for Thursday, February 20th. Which then I know we set the vice chair thing down for C, but okay. Um, moves us down to item B underneath new business, the goals and discussion of point, of points for the upcoming year and prioritizing planning initiatives. We do have in the packet, starting on page 50, some items, you know, that are Luke. And I had kind of just, um, put together, but most of this was like Luke just kind of going through. So Luke, you want to walk us through what's in here?
Yeah.
And then we can kind of have a discussion.
Yeah. Um, so obviously, as I said, you know, moving into the new year, you guys wanted to uh, have a goal setting discussion to see what's important to you and give some direction to staff. And so I included a couple of different things, such as updating the master plan. Um, looking at the tri-community master plan versus a city-specific master plan. Obviously, uh, in the past, we've done a tri-community with city of Sorotuck, Sorotuck Township and the city of the village of Douglas. And we do know that the city of the village of Douglas have their own master plan. I don't think that necessarily means that they're not interested in the tri-community master plan. I do know that Sorotuck Township, based on some loose discussions I've had with the manager, is interested still in the tri-community master plan. So i- if that interests you all, you know, obviously we can reach out to Douglas as well and, and, um, and figure out the next steps there. Uh, commercial zone review was the next, uh, thing I included. Obviously, we, we've been discussing, uh, a review of commercial zones and, um, one of those things may be the bed and breakfast text amendment brought to us tonight. So that's on the list as well. Um, we have the seasonal shuttle service between remote parking areas downtown. Um, we, uh, did have a section for public recommendations and feedback, and we did receive some public recommendations, which I emailed to yourselves. One of those recommendations was, do we want to bring chickens into the city of Sorotuck? So that, that's been emailed to you. And just in, in general, this was more to open dialogue between yourselves to see what you guys think is important. And I've had discussions with, with some of you individually and you have some fantastic ideas. So this is a time to sort of air those ideas and see if we, um, we, we should follow up on them and continue with them. Um, and, uh, yeah.
Thanks, Luke.
Thank you.
I think just to kind of opening this up, obviously we all know that the master plan is due for renewal by 2026.
It's legally required.
Yep, legally required because the last one we did was 2016. Because of COVID, we just did a very high level five-year review, which is extremely high level.
So high.
So, so high, so high. I only think three of us looked at it. Uh, no, but we do need, because again, it's legally required, but we have to do it every 10. It is recommended that you review. And so it was, um, that was kind of passed over. So I, that to me is a given that we have to make that a priority for 2025 because it has to be start with. And Bobby, I know you've had the experience with this, you know, of in one of our early meetings, just kind of getting a calendar together and start saying, okay, what all do we need to cover between now and the end of 2026 to make this happen? We're going to need budgets because you have a lot of outside consulting that has to be done, but just kind of started to talk about what has to occur when from a calendar standpoint, I think is, is key. The tri-community master plan, as you put out, that's what it, that's how it was done last time. As far as I know from my brief conversations, I think everyone was interested, although I will have to say that initially I heard that Douglas was thinking that they're going to do their own city one. And then once they completed their city one, they would be, they would be open to discussions on a tri-community basis, but I don't know if that's changed. And I, there is some advantages to doing just the city. You know, but that does require that you're doing two, if you're doing the city of Sorotuck and, but, um, but I do think that that should be a discussion that we would have, you know, in, one of the January, February type of meetings to kind of make it, make that determination if we're going to have a city only or a.
Chairman Mans, if I may, the, oh, I'm sorry. But, um, you were, you were, I believe on the council, last council meeting, uh, listening in, there's been a lot of discussion in terms of, but the same topic came up. Uh, I believe it's going to be front and center on a working session. The city council is going to have, if I were to take the temperature, it sounds like they're kind of leaning towards having a Sorotuck specific master plan. Again, hopefully one that rolls up into a tri-community plan, but, and, and I think that makes sense from my own perspective as a council member. So, you know, uh, I think, I'm hoping that we'll get some direction out of the council, uh, early January on that.
And I think that, you know, again, not to turn it into, you know, discussion on it, but from my conversations that I had with township and with Douglas, they're very different than us. I mean, they, they have a lot more opportunity. I mean, Douglas has got a couple of major opportunities for development, you know, that we don't have. So I understand Douglas what potentially looking and saying they want to have their own, you know, master plan. Township has the same opportunities, you know, we don't have a lot of that. So it's, and as they pointed out to us, a lot of our focus is, you know, has been on short-term rental. and as they pointed out to us, a lot of our focus is, you know, has been on short-term rental, and that's not what they're going to be looking at in their master plan. We generate a lot of the revenue, like with, a lot of our revenue is generated by Ogle Beach, which is in our, you know, City of Sagatuck. So I think there's a lot of merit to a city plan, and then once all three have done their individual, we may want to look at a
Have some common goals and objectives, right?
Yeah.
Like to comment.
Absolutely.
Considering, considering how we relate to each other in term geographically and in terms of resources and what drives this community in total. We better be working together and talking to one another and committed to certain strategies. Because, I mean, we share a river with the township.
Yep.
And they may do something that is not supportive of Sagatuck, or Sagatuck may do something that's not supportive with the township. When it comes to those kinds of assets, just like the waterfront asset, if you're sharing that with somebody just by, just because of geography, you should be talking to one another and you should be working together. And the tri-community plan, basically, and I do feel passionate, as you can tell, I can feel passionate about this, because basically, what creates the value for this community, the tri-community, is the resources and the assets that we share. And we don't have to be alike, and we don't have to agree in everything, we don't have to have the same strategies, but the strategies that we do have, we need to make sure that they're supporting one another and are integrated rather than fighting one another. So, you know, if each community wants to start out figuring out who they are or, you know, what they value or how they plan to manage those resources going forward. For instance, if we have, in terms of the township, most of Blue Star Highway is surrounded by township property. And, but Blue Star Highway is sort of the entryway, regardless of which direction you're coming from, to the City of Douglas as well as to the City of Sagatuck. Should be talking to one another, and you should be in agreement. So personally, from, and I've had a fair amount of experience in terms of strategies and strategic development. I can't imagine the circumstances that I would support individual developments of a master plan strategy.
Per city, okay.
I mean, I'm not saying that you have to start out that way, but there has to be an agreement among the entities that at some point you come together and you make sure that you haven't done anything that's going to disadvantage the other, and that it all comes together in terms of what makes this place the place that it is.
And I hear that, and I would fully agree, because I do think, when I heard discussion about the individual city ones, I said, I can see if they want to have something. I do think, to your point, you still need to have some type of consensus, whether that is a full tri-community master plan or it's an overview. What I didn't under, you know, obviously, when we start getting into the whole master plan, we can have the conversation, but couldn't a master plan have a section that says City of Sagatuck? A section that says City of Douglas or Village of Douglas, and then Sagatuck Township? They could each have their own section within that master plan, and then you still have everything that you all, that you all agree upon, right?
Right.
Yeah.
We're too small of an area to really be separate, so interconnected on so many things, that it's, it has to be talking together, but you're right, Douglas has some focuses that we don't have, where they have that opportunity, same with the township, and we have things they don't have.
Correct.
So.
But I think you We have a lot in common.
Yeah, absolutely, and it's too small. Yes.
And I think that
Separate it.
So if we, even if they said that they were wanted to have a specific one, I think we would try to encourage that we would like to see their specific one within the tri-community one, just like how ours would be.
There has to be a time that we all come together.
Exactly.
We can't, I mean, we can't exist in the space independently of one another.
Because that was my concern with the city one, I could say, well, if we set a goal that you were going to try to have a city one, whether it's our City of Sagatuck, City of Douglas Township of 2026, and then everybody comes out with it, and then you read them all three of them, and they, there's no commonality, then I'm like, well.
And I think we can have this, but they, they're going to make up their own minds.
And that's why I'm trying to say, it's like, I'm just, we need to make it a priority to try to find out if they're all thinking the same thing.
Finding out, I'm sorry, it's not only finding out, it's actually the leadership at each of these cities.
Needs to be.
Needs to come together and hash this out. It's not about, you know, we'd like for you to do this, or, you know, why are you doing it then? I mean, we have a city manager, we have a mayor, we have a mayor pro temp.
True. They need to
As do they, or what are, what are the issues that are potentially in conflict? Work those out so that it is a tri
Or at least, yeah, get them all to agree that we're going to work together. Now, again, whoever's coordinating always becomes the challenge of, now you've got three communities you're trying to coordinate meetings and stuff with, but
That's what you hire a consultant for.
Exactly, that's what I was going to say, that's really the way it's done, you know, it's how it was done in 2015 and 2016, you were, you
2003 was the one I
2003, okay.
Involved in, but in 2016, not so much. But still, but the issue is, and the other area of my passion when it comes to tri-community plans, is that, okay, you put a lot of work into it, everybody comes together, they put it on a shelf, if you go into each of these offices, forgive me, because I hope it isn't true, but you go into each of these offices and something comes up and you say, why don't you pull that off the shelf and let's read what the strategy, let's read what the master plan is, it's covered with dust.
Yeah.
It gets signed off on, and 10 years later, or eight years later, it gets pulled back out again.
Sorry.
So that's the, my other comment. If you're, if you're actually going to use it for the purpose with which it's intended, for which it's intended, then, you know, more than happy to help. But if the behavior is going to continue to be the same as it's always been, I have no interest.
And I think those are very good points, and even as you're taking it to the city council for their strategic meeting next month, you know, kind of sharing that type of idea, because even as you were talking, Bobby, it reminds me that, you know, some of the other communities don't have an issue in pushing back to us, I mean, technically Ferry Street, where the bridge or the culvert is out, that's Douglas, but I understand that they're having no issue coming back and saying, hey, Sagatuck benefits, because that road being open, and we want you to contribute towards it, and so it's kind of goes to show that it's their land and, you know, issue, but they're willing to, in those situations, say, hey, we need some money from you also. Not that has to do with master plan, but it's just, you know, we're just kind of saying, hey, we, we are all
We all share in all of
Resources.
We all share in all of this, you know, where, where lake meets river meets dunes meets forest.
Oh wait, and we are a very unique community, speaking to our sauce, because who else is in here? In the fact that no one, when they first come here, no one can believe that you actually have to leave downtown the City of Sagatuck, drive through Douglas to get to the remaining part of the City of Sagatuck.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You spend more time in Douglas.
I spend more time in Douglas, yeah. And our largest, one of our large, beside property taxes, revenue generator, is you have to drive through Douglas to get to it, you know, because it's Ogle Beach.
I've done a couple of site plan reviews, or sorry, a couple of site reviews where I go onsite, just to make sure that people built what they said they were going to build, and it's two minutes as the, as the crow flies, but it's a 15-minute drive, and I've got to go through Douglas to get there, yeah.
Yeah, so it's, that makes it even by far the most unique is when it comes to the Sagatuck Douglas, and we're not trying to raise the issue that was raised years ago of whether we should have two different municipalities, so if anyone's listening, because I think that's been done and decided. But I think when it comes to master plan, it really is critical that we all understand the uniqueness.
You know, each of these entities brings such value and individually, but then when you look at them and how they come together and the, I mean, outstanding value they create, so together. Yeah. I just, well, you know.
I think this is a priority.
So I think that stays as a priority. These commercial zone review, you know, you've heard me mention this now for three or four months, where we've said we wanted to try to look at our commercial zones, each of the ones that we have, do we need each of them, is there a possibility that they could be combined and still allow us to be able to function, not have an extreme number of nonconformities, because when Ryan was kind of zoning and planning, we took some time last year, and we had looked at all the different commercial zones, and we had determined, because we were trying to understand how they got set, and I think I've mentioned this in some of the meetings, but I know Austin's newer, Joe, I think you were there. What we've learned was that at the time when they were setting the, writing the zone, zoning revisions back in 2014, they sent somebody around and they evaluated every property, and then they built zones based upon the similarities of the properties that existed, so therefore you ended up having Water Street North, Water Street East, Water Street South. But if we were really looking at it, I think we might want to kind of say, well, do we need all the different zones, or should we have, you know, a central commercial and then some ancillaries, I mean, these are kind of discussions that we, I think we want to look at. Also, what's allowed and not allowed, it's not consistent between our different commercial zones. And my big point has been, we do have these very, very small pieces that were left of north and south that currently have the ability to do things that's very different than what we were allowing in the new waterfront, or would be allowed across the street in some of the situations. And so I think that, you know, just having that as a priority to kind of look at each of the zones, evaluate what's permitted, evaluate our requirements for a building to me would be beneficial. Big one is Water Street North currently has the ability to build 100% lot coverage. And it sits in an area where people were talking about access to water and that. Nothing against, you know, the, anyone who owns in that zone, but is, you know, is that really what we want?
Right.
Yeah.
I guess I'm all for simplification, cleaning some of it up, driving standards that make it equitable and fair across our different zones, and I think what you're saying makes a lot of sense. I would just add that there may be a couple of input sources that will help if we, when we do get into that discussion. First being the city's strategy session that they're going on, as the city looks at it, then as part of that, there is a survey going out to get the pulse of the public, so we may get some good, you know, feedback from that source. And second, I think that if anything, this has got to dovetail the master plan work, right? It should be, the, the master plan should ultimately drive what we're doing with our, with our zone, in my opinion anyway, right? Because this, that is our governing, should be our governing document from a strategy perspective, so. Third, I'd just say it's a lot of work, so, you know, if we're going to take this on, we just need to be cognizant of, of everything else we're going to have on our plates, especially with the master plan due this year.
Right.
And I think that, and you've, you've been through with the master plan, when I was thinking like of this part of it, you kind of, we do this review, but it, it helps roll up into the master plan, because we've done the review, instead of trying to do the commercial zone review at, at a master plan level, we're doing it at a subset level, then it would roll up and help us with the overall master plan for the city, for the City of Sagatuck's component of it.
Yes. The only thing I would say is what we need, personally, I think, is in order to do this work, we need some vision from the city.
Yeah.
We need vision from the city, we need, you know, high-level strategic advice, let's say, from the city, and that's the work they're going to do in, hopefully, in January, sometime in January. And then it directs, it should direct everything else we do.
Correct.
Yeah.
But it has to start there. And it's not, I, I don't want to imply that it's direction, because I hope it's not. But it's basically, you know, sort of setting the vision and advising what those parameters are, and then let's go to work.
That's exactly how I see it as well.
But I, I do think we need to also, I, I don't think we need to wait for them to be explicit about it. We do have a tri-community master plan.
Right.
We do have, I mean, looking at the Water Street North versus Water Street South, there's obviously a big concern with the waterfront and the preservation, and Water Street North is probably the most vulnerable to development at this time, and yet is, it is the most permissive, quite 100%. So I don't, I personally don't understand why we have such a difference between Water Street North and Water Street South, but I, I do think that we have some marching orders in a sense right now. CJ looks
David just said something.
Mr. Sherman, just, just to clarify, our past project, we, we did combine Water Street North and South into the waterfront preservation district. So we are pretty well set with, with the waterfront commercial properties. But again, all of our downtown zoning districts, commercial districts certainly need to be reassessed as well as residential. Just a couple, I think it's a great conversation, I just want to know one thing, maybe one or two you were there, but on March 17th, 2022, I actually gave you guys a presentation concerning the master plan update, and one of the final slides in that presentation was the, the pros and cons of a citywide versus a tri-communities plan, and we, we talked about some of the pros and cons, very similar to this conversation. And, and I think at that meeting, I think that you were leaning toward the, the tri-communities plan at that point as well, but I just checked online, and the video for that March 17th, 2022 meeting doesn't seem to be working. Maybe city staff could, could find that for you, in case anyone wants to look back at that presentation. Also, I'd be happy just, we could run through those slides in the next month or two, if you'd like to as well, I can, I can kind of give a abbreviated version of that presentation in 15 or 20 minutes at a future meeting, just to talk about the master planning process in general. And just one clarification, the Planning Enable Act, I'm sorry, the Planning Enabling Act requires the five-year review, which must be at a meeting, must be reflected on, on the, the minutes for the meeting. There, there's not a 10-year update requirement in the act, but it, it, a master plan should be reviewed, but as a best practice every 10 years, or at, at the time when the, the plan is no longer reflecting, you know, the priorities of the community, or if conditions have changed so much that it's just really not providing the proper guidance for land use decisions, so. So the, the 2026 deadline that was kind of, that was referenced, I, I don't, I don't think we're, we're bound to that. I think you can do this at your pace in the, the time it takes you to do it. I think when you're dealing with, with two other municipalities as well, we're going to have to get commitment from, from them to all, to work on this in a, in a way concurrently. You know, we can certainly all work on our own parts and then have a, a series of cooperative meetings, so that, that's fine, but I think we're definitely extending a timeframe when we have three jurisdictions working together. I mean, I would say no less than a year for this type of effort, whereas a, a citywide plan could certainly be a much more abbreviated process, but that doesn't seem to be the, the desire. So a number of things to think about with the master plan. And, and I think it was, I liked the comment before about, you know, a master plan really should be guiding a zoning ordinance update. And I have this, the same conversation with a lot of communities where there's, we have so many problems with the zoning ordinance, but we wrestle with the fact as well, maybe we should do the master plan first so we can to, just to influence and guide that zoning ordinance update project. But I think when we have a, a case like this where we have so many issues with our residential and commercial districts, as long as we're cleaning those up and making sure they make sense, and, and we're doing it in a way that's consistent with the, the current plan, I, I don't think we have to do the master plan before this zoning or, zoning ordinance update. I mean, we could do them simultaneously, we could do one, we could do zoning before the master plan, I don't think that would be a problem. Unless we're like creating districts that are so far beyond what the future land use map is anticipating. So I think there's some flex, I think you have options and flexibility on, on what you want to do first, and the timing of both of those efforts. And, and I, I could actually offer some, a few different ways to look at the zoning ordinance in, in the districts, actually, I've, I've just finished up two days here in Hilton Head, doing the exact same thing, we've been wrestling with 23 zoning districts, and we consolidated them down to 12 today after a very painful two days of meetings, but a lot of fun at the same time, so I, I can probably help you with some, some different models and worksheets that we can use to be able to determine which districts make the most sense, how, how they compare to each other, should we consolidate, should we make better distinction between districts, so those are all the questions that we should be asking during that type of process.
That is great, so you actually could help us with like a template that would kind of lay out the process, and then do the comparisons of what is currently in each of the zones. and then do the comparisons of what is currently in each of the zones. And then even with.
Yes.
Moving us towards recommendation for, here's what the similarities are. Here might be the suggested recommendations for combination or just changes within the existing.
Exactly. And I think, uh, analysis of, you know, side by side, a table of side by side columns showing allowable land uses. And, and we did a little bit of, of that during the, uh, the waterfront project. We did it side by side, but we do that with all of our districts. And then we compare side by side tables and, and columns of, of the, uh, dimensional requirements as well for those districts. So, um, and, and that would then help you to, to determine, you know, which district we need and, and the extent of the changes. And the only other thing I want to mention, and, and Luke feels his pain on a daily basis, but there are also a lot of issues with the zoning ordinance, uh, so much that, um, a lot of times even simple zoning permits involve conversations that, um, are, it's, you think, I mean, you think about the time and money involved in the zoning update project, but there's also a lot of time and money into individual weekly reviews that could some, are overly complicated based on a number of the current requirements for e- even single-family residential development. So there's a, a lot of opportunity to improve and streamline and clarify beyond just our zoning districts too. And, and, and Luke may be able to, to speak about it in his day-to-day experience, but, um, there, there's a lo, a lot of other work that needs to be done in the ordinance.
No, I would agree. And I think the main reason why in this proposal, you know, Luke's going to put out, we started, which is saying the commercial is knowing that we do have others of the priorities. You know, I had many times with somebody that said, well, why aren't you looking at the residential ones too? And I think eventually that would probably be another item, but I'm not certain that we want to bite off looking at all zones in one year. So I thought the commercial made sense to kind of start with. And then now adding in R four because it is transitional to the commercial. So it kind of makes sense that we would be adding that in. So I have a feeling we're kind of in agreement on that one. Obviously we were in agreement on the review of the R four because we postponed.
Right.
Which, so that, that was, I guess, I don't know if we call that really a twenty-five priority, but it's, because it's fallen underneath the public hearing that we just postponed. But it is, I still want to list it so that everyone knows that we are looking at the R four, um, you know, zone in addition to the commercial.
Continuation of twenty twenty-four, really, since it's already open.
Absolutely.
Thoughts on this one here, the shuttle service?
What?
If that's something that.
There is no shuttle service now.
This one, I don't know what's making folks so it's, the other ones I was very much aware of. Now on this one, I think, I remember there was some discussion.
I think Chris, uh, Councilman, Councilman Peterson has brought up shuttle service a lot, potentially from some of the vacant spaces and like Douglas and having it into downtown Sagatuck.
There's been a couple of different conversations. There's been talk of like a regular routing during the summer, right? So it's a.
Where they actually have time schedules so that people can kind of understand. Question I had, and Luke, I don't know if you know it.
I'll see if I can.
Asking Ryan is, I didn't know if that falls, how, how planning is involved with some of that.
How does that?
Yeah. Versus, is that something that would be more of a council or, you know, especially if you're talking about using Douglas's lots, that becomes an interbur, interurban issue? And they would, and they, they review it and I would think they would bring it to each of the cities. And I, I wasn't certain how we would be involved with.
Right.
Unless we were just kind of looking at, I mean, I've had some people question, you know, our parking requirements that were, are within our zoning ordinance, you know, like if we wanted to go back and look at that. But just like the decision to allow parking on one side of the street, that was a city council.
Right.
Decision. It didn't go through planning for us to kind of evaluate it.
What about the, when it go through us though, to evaluate parking improvement options? And I think this kind of falls under that umbrella with the, here, you know, this can help alleviate parking congestion. Cause I know when we've spoken before, it's like, what, what ways could planning commission help to?
Cause the only thing I could think of when we were coming up and we're talking from planning, I said, I guess we could look at like if somebody said, okay, well, do you want to have like a new parking lot or a structure? Is it allowed in any of our zones? And I was like, well, currently no. So we'd have to kind of look and say, well, would we want to incorporate something like that? I mean, we have parking, flat parking lots, but if somebody said they wanted to do a two-level one, it's currently, as far as I know, I didn't see it as a permitted use.
I don't believe it is.
Special and so I can see that falling into planning where you're kind of reviewing, again, it's, you're reviewing the ordinance. But it's kind of hard to say that we're going to review planning decisions for the city. Again, it falls into the master plan. I think part of the master plan may be kind of talking about, you know, transportation and, you know, use of space or.
I'll, I'll be surprised if this topic is not front and center during the city's strategy discussion. And I think again, like input into our zoning and master plan, there'll be more, there should be some top-down direction that may come to us. And if it does, we can incorporate it into our outlook into next year's workload.
I would think so.
But if it does come to us.
Give us some direction.
I want to understand the basis for it, why it's a planning.
Well, I would, I would suspect it would be in the context of this is what we want to do. How would planning see the zoning working around it so we can make this happen? That's how I would expect it to come, but I'm just, that's why I'm throwing it out there. I don't know more to come.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's, and that's why it's, in prior years, we'd kind of come up with some of the things that we thought were important, but then you also needed to hear council in alignment. Because I, I know we were talking of initially about like short-term rental, but it was also on the councils and the waterfront preservation. I think it was on our agenda, but council also had it, you know, as protection of the waterfront was, was a high item. So we'll get a lot from your meeting though, is January twenty-sixth?
Twenty-fourth, it's the twenty-fourth or?
Yeah. I think it's after our January meeting.
I think it is, yeah.
So when we were doing a gazillion years ago, when we were developing the, um, SCA, that was when you were required to provide X number of parking spaces for the size of your audience. And the parking lot that was there only provided maybe two-thirds of the requirement. And if you couldn't provide them, then the city charged you a fee for the spaces you couldn't provide. Now I'm operating from my memory now, so please don't hold me to the specifics of this. But basically, um, uh, at the same time concurrently, we just received a grant from the state, uh, to develop the rain garden, which is where the garden is today. So when we, I came to planning, that's where I had to come to it, planning. And basically they said that, you know, you need to provide us more parking spaces or else pay us X number of dollars, which was like eighty thousand or something like that. And, um, just basically said, you know, you've got a choice. We don't have eighty thousand dollars. So we can take the rain garden and that grant was shared with the city. We can take the rain garden and we can convert that to parking spaces. That was planning. So, um, I said, your choice.
Yeah.
So they said, we, we'd prefer to have the rain garden money from the state. So, uh, they waived it. But that was plant, my point is that's when we came to planning about parking.
And I could, and again, that's where I guess if we were going back and looking at
Right.
what the ordinance say in each zone about parking, I could see that. But as far as right now, if they wanted to run some kind of shuttle service, I would first think that would go through the interurban board and then let that feed up or it comes from, comes from council.
Okay.
And then I think council, Joe is also looking at, cause in the past, we had citizens who had talked about the whole park street and whether we're ever going to get around to having like some kind of sidewalks or something. Get it kind of fell back into that, is that really part of planning? Although it's, if you guys directed it and it was going to move forward, it would, because we'd have to then put some type of changes to the ordinances for those zones, that, you know, as, but, so that eventually we would be involved, but it would, it really requires almost council action, you know, on that one, that they want to move forward. Cause that's the only other one I can think of is.
Yeah, to drive all of that.
Right. Yeah, because they drive that and then, you know, what to, as we all know, it's a complicated because on one side of the street in some sections, it works, it works better on the east and other sections, it works better on the west and you can't zigzag it. And, um, so that's, that, that means. Well, yeah, then, then it does become, I think somebody said it on the workshop. It's like, well, you take it down to Campbell and then does it, you know, what happens after that? Yeah.
There you go.
So, um, but I know that's the only other one. And I'm kind of jumping into the public recommendation. That's the only public recommendation that had come up. And I told him it was already on council's agenda that it may come down to us. And then you had the one.
There was, yeah.
For chickens, but you're like, well, unless somebody else calls that a priority, I don't put that on my list, but we're up to.
Just to Chris.
It's not, it's not my list, it's our list. So, um, was there any items on any of yours that you would like to have us? And I think it's already a full, but, and then we may get stuff from council. Yeah.
I, I feel just the, the master plan's been a discussion for so long. That's got to be something that's worth doing. We had a big year of other things this year. It's time to get back to that.
So I know this doesn't require, you know, any motion, but I guess if we were putting it in the minutes, we would say that we are prioritizing the master plan at a tri-community level, commercial zones, continuation of our, our four review based upon public hearing that opened in December second. And then anything else that council, you know, advises.
There is a hand raised, yeah. Obviously we don't have any.
We have to open anything or is it open?
We don't have to, uh, but yeah, just pointing that out.
Who is it?
As soon as she says chickens, so.
Cause I can put, well, I mean, the next thing that we actually moved to is public comment. Was there other things on?
We did add an agenda item.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
Yes.
We'll get to that, uh, comment in just a, a second.
Yeah.
So I think does that cover what we think is the initial?
Yeah, well, did we want to, since number five is public recommendations and feedback is, would it be appropriate to?
Oh, that's true.
See if anyone online has anything that they wanted to.
Very good, right? Yeah, we can do that that way. I didn't, because we originally had, it was like if somebody sent it in, but it actually, and it was during public comment on the agenda items, which that's why I was thinking, but if they. Do we just have one hand?
We, we did have a, we, yep. Absolutely.
Ask them, town, unmute them and we could ask if it was in relation to.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
We can.
All right. So, uh, Severn Newiki, eight four one Holland Street. And basically, um, I'm the one that did send, that did reach out to the city council. I guess two months ago in regards to the chicken ordinance. I did have a conversation with Ryan and also had a conversation with Luke in regards to this conference, to this ordinance. So it seems like this, uh, idea would have to go through your committee because of the chicken coop. I guess it's a permanent structure and in that way it goes through your ordinance. So right now, we do not have, um, ordinance that allows possession of chicken, uh, chickens in the backyard in the, in the R one district. And I would like to put that on the agenda for the next year and, uh, basically create a new ordinance with the new language that will allow us to have up to five or six chickens. Ob- obviously without the roosters, uh, there. So also just to give you more, uh, a few more, uh, points, um, Douglas has one. They did, uh, created like two years ago. Uh, Holland has one, South Heaven, Grand Rapids, Detroit just passed it, I guess, two weeks ago. So it's something that is happening around us in last few years. And I think it's, it's time for us to, um, do the same thing and hopefully, you know, push this into, into, push this process so it can start and be open to a public comment. Again, I'm not, I'm not asking to create something new. You know, most of those ordinance are copy of each other when you look at them, uh, individually. So I think it's a pretty straightforward issue. It's just an idea of, of having, uh, the public, um, to have a chance to raise their opinion and, and for, for you, uh, all to discuss this issue. And hopefully we can, we can, um, have that discussion. Thank you.
Very good. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you. It's, I'm sure it is a topic that's coming up in other places. Maybe council can have it as part of theirs and then let us know if they.
Yeah, it's a big, uh, it's a bigger, sorry to interrupt, it, it, it is a bigger topic than most people think. Cause obviously, um, you can just copy and paste, that is a, an option. But you've got to think about things like the structure they're in, what are the setbacks for that structure? Are you having licenses for the amount of chickens? So people have to apply or is it just a permitted thing? What, exactly. Is this going to add to the lot coverage? I mean, so these are all, you know.
Nuisance to the neighbor?
Is it a nuisance to the neighbors? Are we having a certain distance from structures? Is it only a certain distance from structures on your parcels? So there's just a, a lot of different things.
Certain size to even have it considered.
Exactly, yeah. Yep.
I mean, it's obviously it's different if you're in, you know, one of the zones that have half acre minimums versus zones that have, you know, forty-five hundred square, forty-five hundred square.
And I think a lot of communities do have a minimum lot size for if you want to have chickens, um, so.
Okay.
The, and I think the only other thing that I just contribute to maybe looking at, and I know we've talked about the accessory dwelling unit, um, ordinance and how it looks. And I, I mentioned earlier how I'd like if there's way, the ways that we can make it more permissive to people, especially full-time residents who are running one, uh, the cost of living in this area is, is very high. And, and obviously we've cracked back on short-term rentals, but I do think it's imperative that where possible, we are allowing our citizens to, you know, help supplement their income to be able to afford to live here. The council made that clear with their votes that we have a full-time resident population, uh, problem. So if we can make it easier, whether that's taking away like a kitchen requirement or these other little things from new units, it's, I'm, I'm up for looking at that.
I think that actually would be a good item to put on our list is the review of ADU requirements. Cause we were talking, um, and Luke.
Yeah, we sort of spoke about, uh, I think, I, I, I don't want to misquote anyone, but I think what Mark said at the last meeting is, um, you know, if these special land use requirements are coming before us for a license to rent an accessory dwelling unit and we always approve them, then why are we doing a special land use? Oh, it may have been used, yeah, sorry about, okay.
For you and he, yeah, he phoned me, yeah.
Okay, well, at least I didn't misquote anyone, but.
You got it right.
Yeah, and, and, and so, yeah, I think that may be something that, that we should look at.
Right. Because again, if there's a way of streamlining it, you know, to where it can have administrative approval, doesn't require a whole special land use, the fees, the time that it takes on staff to kind of, you know.
It is expensive.
Public hearings and everything else just for, yeah. No, that, that's, that's good, Austin. So I think we would definitely want to have that in there. So that will be our goals. Um, item C underneath new business is the election of a vice chair. I'd just like to open.
Mr. Chair, if I could jump in for a second here, um, so the, your bylaws, Article Six, subsection one, provides that the election of new officers, uh, shall be held as the last item of business in the January meeting, the first meeting of January. So we do have a bit of a conflict with the bylaws there. I think. Sorry, can you hear me?
Sorry, go ahead.
I think there's two options essentially that we could, you know, suspend the bylaws, uh, through a, a vote. Or we could just postpone until January. So it's, it's what this board decides. If you choose to suspend, I think we would need four votes, um, to suspend it. There's, you, you're allowed to amend your bylaws, but you would need a, an affirmative vote of the majority of the entire planning commission. And so I think we would need the four to push it over the edge there. I think it would, if you choose to suspend, it would just be a temporary, you know, suspension for this purpose. It wouldn't necessarily be amending the bylaws, uh, going forward.
And Trent, the reason that we are doing the vice chair is that Ann Broker was the vice chair and she resigned last month. So we currently don't have a vice chair. So we're basically not doing an election of a vice chair. We're just trying to replace the vice chair that we had. So I don't know how that, I don't know how that relates, but like if Ann would have left in February, we, we wouldn't wait till January of next year to be our vice chair.
I guess my point is that I think from, from what the bylaws read is that if you do appoint one in January, then you would, the bylaws would mandate that you would appoint a vice, your elected officers in January. And so I'm just not sure that, um, you know, that it accomplishes much to appoint someone today to then have to reappoint someone in January. Or, you know, the alternative would be that we'd be violating the, the bylaws, um.
So then we can, we can make a motion to suspend the bylaws for this election because we need to have a vice chair in place because the chair is not going to be there in January.
Yep, I think that would be appropriate. Yep. I think that would be appropriate. And I think it would, and then in January, I just, I don't think there'd be any need to elect a new vice chair. Because we would have already covered that here and we'd have no bylaw issue. So.
Now, if we suspend to elect a vice chair, do we, can we also then do the chair now or do we need to wait till January to do that?
I don't think we could do that because we amended the agenda to elect a vice chair. We didn't amend the agenda to elect the chair and vice chair.
Yeah.
Although that would be simpler and had I have reached out to, I'm sorry, Trent, I, yeah.
So I guess we need a motion to suspend the-
Yeah, I would, I would just have a motion to temporarily suspend Article Six, Subsection One of the, of the bylaws.
I'm make a motion to temporarily suspend Article Six, Subsection One of the bylaws in order for the planning commission to appoint a new vice chair.
I second.
And we will do a roll call on this, please.
Yes. Badrick?
Yes.
Sorry.
Yes.
Ron? Yes. Vance?
Yes.
And Mariner?
Yes.
So the motion to suspend the bylaws has been approved. Now we will open up for motions to nominate a vice chair. I'd like to make a motion to nominate CJ Badrick as the vice chair.
Second.
I asked CJ if he's agreeable.
I'd be honored.
Any discussion or anybody else that has? Is that?
Um, I'm sorry, I just, is that, can you make that motion, Steve, as the chair?
I didn't, last time they did, but as morning called out what we did last time.
Um, I might be complicating things unnecessarily. I'm just making sure.
It's an issue.
I'm happy to make a motion.
If there's an issue, is anybody else?
For CJ, I, I make a motion to appoint CJ as vice chair.
I second the motion.
There we go. That cleans it up. Thank you. Just trying to get the meeting over. Every person roll call, please. Not roll call, but.
Um, Badrick?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Ron? Yes. Vance?
Yes.
Yes.
And thank you CJ.
Thank you. Honored. I, I, my favorite part is the voice part. Few times. So thank you.
We'll take that too. Now, I do appreciate it. I think it's, everyone who's here is very active, you know, with it, but it does require that we do have that in place. And I thank you for being willing to step up. Communications, we were already in our kit. So I think we have all of the discussions already happened, communication report of officers and committees. We have the report that's in there from our zoning. There is no committees currently in place, which takes us to public comments. If anyone, we don't have anyone in the room, if we have anyone online that would like to speak, give us your hand up and limit your comments, you know, to three minutes. And this can be on any item that you would like to address. I see one hand. So Sam, if you want to go ahead, is this a new comment or is this?
It's a, it's a comment regards to, to what Luke said. So I didn't suggest that the proposed ordinance is easy or not complicated. The only thing I suggested is that most of the towns around us did go through the same process. And when you go into each of the ordinances, they are very similar to each other. So yes, they may differ with the feet from each of the property, how far you can put the chicken coop. However, most of them are very, very similar. So I would like to make that straight. And also I would like to hear from you because I, I don't think I did hear that if you're going to raise that issue or don't raise that issue, I would like to be, I would like this to be on the record. If this is something you want to work on this, this next year. Again, as I said, our neighbors, Douglas, just did that two years ago. I don't see a reason why you cannot put that on your agenda. It's not something that we have to rediscover. Let's say you just spent an hour on, on Wakewood and going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. This is a different case. Most of our neighbors, neighboring towns went through that. They did their research. You can use their research. You can write your own ordinance the way you want. But again, I want this to be, I would like this to be discussed next year. And I would like it to be on the record saying yes or no. And if no, I would like to see some, hear some reasoning why you don't want to discuss this. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And it was on the record that it did come up for discussion. It will be an item that we will continue to review as we get more guidance on other priorities from city council. I think that concludes public comments. Commissioner comments will start.
I, I don't, oh, I'm not the commissioner.
Yeah, sorry. I'll start over here with Austin.
Uh, thank you guys for standing by as I gave the rose. I mean, I didn't brave it. I had to drive home anyways. So, but thank you. I apologize that it took me so long to get here.
We're glad you did.
We're glad you made it.
And best wishes to all for a happy holiday.
CJ.
Thank you again for the nomination and the vice chair position. I look forward to it. And again, happy holidays and happy new year.
Stepping up CJ and same happy holidays to everyone. Good meeting. Thank you. Like it's an excellent meeting. Wish everybody happy and safe holidays. We will look forward to hearing from council next month and moving forward with some of the priorities that we have on the, starting in January of 2025, brand new year. Good night, everyone. I will, yeah, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All us in favor?
Yes.
Yes.